Meeting to order for Wednesday, June 23 at noon. Could I have a roll call, please?
Recording in progress.
Oh, I'm sorry. It just started recording. So let me go back and say I would like to call the meeting to order at 12:03 on Wednesday, June 23. Could I have a roll call, please?
Phil Shank, present.
That's Texan Duranian, present.
Veronica Cal, present. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded and it will be put on YouTube. It's also live on Channel 9 right now. So that's 1.2. Is anybody else recording? All right, so 1.3 Chairman's addition or deletions. I do have one under the finances and it is dealing with rats at Town Hall, and that means the physical actual rats. So I want to just put that on under finances when we talk about encumbrances and municipal relief transfers. So there's that. All right, moving on to the town administration updates and reports. Is there anything 5.1.1 Guardian IT Administration and Process? I don't have anything in the files for that, Chaz.
I don't have anything immediately, but I do want to say that we had already approved the telephone system for the library and the senior center as a board. There's the formality of the quote coming in from Guardian. I just, I approved that this morning and I put it in the selectman mailbox for all to see afterwards, but I just wanted to make you both aware that that's what that is when you see it. We needed to get it dated before July 1 so that it will be able, we can use 2021 funds as opposed to 2022.
Do we need to come in and sign it?
No.
Okay, perfect.
When did you put that in?
I just emailed it to you before the meeting. I want to say quarter of 12.
Okay, I haven't seen it yet then. All right, thank you. I did. Okay, thanks. So approve the telephone system. All right, anything else under Guardian? Our interim treasurers are getting in place, correct?
Correct. Yep.
All right.
We're getting that set up and the IT survey or the inventory that we had talked about before, I'm in the process of doing. I have a meeting with Guardian today at 6:00 to kind of nail down some info on that, but we should be ready to go. What we're trying to do is to make sure that we are all doing the same thing. There should be no telephone calls to Guardian. It needs to be all done by the help desk. And its access information or password information is anything about adding or taking away an account, and that's both on the telephone system and/or the computer system, needs to come to the board so that we can, we can effect that change.
Okay, so everything done by, well, after your meeting tonight, just write up something for me. I did send out a thing to all the department heads. You guys saw that, you know, just to reiterate things from the staff meeting, and I didn't put anything about Guardian on there. So it might be good.
Right.
An update on that.
Yep, that's the plan. So I will have it after my meeting with Brad tonight. I'll have it all in writing for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, moving on to finances. The first thing is FY22 insurance. This is the insurance for the town. And Bruce Hayman had come by probably a week and a half ago and asked that the Board of Selectmen sign it. That has gone to our financial team and to Town Council to be reviewed at the request of Town Council. So once that is back to us, we can sign. I did email Bruce, and I don't know if I put it in here, asking for a time when he would be available next week, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. I'm hoping for one of our meetings, since we have a meeting on each of those days, to meet for, at once we have approved it, but we do need to wait for that to come back from Council and Finance. So that's the FY22 insurance. I think I put a copy, I did, in SharePoint of that. That's a 63-page document. So you guys can look through that if you're interested. And it also includes the breakdown, it's the handwritten breakdown of premiums from year to year comparison.
I did see that, yes.
Okay, so take a look at that. I'm going to put this back on. And I also included a correspondence that was sent to me regarding insurance. So I'm just gonna read this into the record. This arrived on Monday, June 14. Hi Veronica, hope all is well. I know the town has been working through some things recently, and Mr. Kreidler is no longer employed by the town. So I wanted to touch base and thank you for the time and would love the opportunity to visit this again next spring. We are the agency that started the Paragon slash Trident program. So if there was an ever issue regarding your agent, we would be able to step in and take over seamlessly. At that point, we would take the time to review and confirm all coverages, exposures, et cetera, are accurate. I still have the proposal from 2011. If you ever wanted to review it, the total PNC was $177,000, but that was 10 years ago. That's my aside on this. Please do not hesitate to call or email me anytime. Thanks again, and have a great week. And that is from Jason Farah. So I just wanted you guys to know that we did receive that correspondence, and perhaps that's something we can pull out for next year when we're looking at this.
Okay.
Or the financial team or whomever can look at. So I wanted to put that into the record. So let me see if there's anything else. That's all I had on that. Any questions that either of you have or anything that you want to add to this on the FY22 insurance for the town?
No.
All right, so once we have a response back, the inquiry is out to take a look at that. Once we have a response back, we can vote on signing it and then go ahead and do that.
Okay.
So then, because it's for FY22, it would be good to have that done by next week, Wednesday. So that's all I have on that. All right, the next one is an invoice that came in. Let me look at this. So it's FY21 payment to FFS. Is that what's in the agenda here?
Correct.
Let me look at the agenda a second. All right, FY21 payment to NFS. All right.
It'd be NFP, ma'am.
It should be NFP. I typed that incorrectly. I'm sorry. That's why it was, this is regarding employee healthcare plans, services, and renewal. The, the, I just got to the, sorry, it's taken me a minute to navigate here. This is NFP. So I do have it down at the bottom. There was an invoice sent to the town treasurer. Good morning. Please see attached and below. We have paid this $10,000. This is from Jared to us, to the selectmen, or at least to me, not to the selectmen. And I did put this in SharePoint, so it's there now for you to look at. Please see attached them below. We have paid this $10,000 the past three-plus years out of the health insurance town share account. There is enough to cover this invoice in that account, so I will place it on next week's warrant. Per Kevin, that's Kevin Pesos, who was the, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. He was the person that presented the joint agreement to the Board of Selectmen in December, and I believe again in January. He attended our meetings. I know that neither of you were on the board then, but anyway, this is for him. Per Kevin, it is recommended we meet to continue the work that has been happening. I did watch a few meetings in regards to health insurance, but there did not seem to be 100% agreement about the direction Townsend was going. Let me know your thoughts. Jared. So Jared was looking for direction. I asked him to look for a contract, which he could not, which was not really there. So Joe, I know you followed up with the corporation. So do you want to take it from here?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was just confused by the $10,000 consulting fee, I guess is what caught my attention. And so I called the main corporation and they sent me to a Ken Lombardi. And I've had several conversations with him. And so I've asked him if he could at least give us a breakdown as to what the $10,000 is paying for. And he said that he could just give us kind of a real summary, a brief summary. And that's, the bill's $10,000, that's the bill. And I asked him if he could give us a breakdown of the services, which he didn't think he could do it, but he did want to at least let me know also. And I asked him for contracts if he could send them. And I did get them today. And Madam Chair, I brought them up and I put them up in the meeting hall so everybody can get a copy of them. You know, he did say that also on May 4 of this year, Mr. Kreidler resigned a contract. Well, the contract that I just was presented by him, the one in April of 2020, it shows Jim's signature on it, but the one here for the 21 to 22, there's no signature. I, you know, I mean, if it's a service that we need, I feel we need to discuss this a little bit. But, you know, for $10,000 consulting fee, I personally would like to know what are we getting for $10,000? That's a lot of money.
Chaz, any thoughts before I jump in?
Um, no, but I'll take a bookmark.
Okay, so what I think I would like to do is have a motion to pay the April 29, 2020. I did just scan in, so it is on in SharePoint. Chaz, you might not have seen this. Joe brought them in and I did scan them and, and put them up to SharePoint. Jim signed last April 2, it looks like, or I don't know the date that he signed. The contract is dated April, well, the letter of engagement, I guess, is dated April 29, 2020. And it was signed by our town administrator. And there is a note next to it that says, per BOS vote on 4, it's either a 2 or a 7, 20. And I believe this has to do with the Board of Selectmen when COVID hit, giving the town administrator the ability to sign without checking in with them. So.
Madam Chair, before we do a vote, I just would like, I want everyone to know also, I reached out to Adam and I just asked the questions about these contracts. I did not have them in front of me, but Adam's advice was that before we do anything, we pay anything, that he should really review these. So I don't know what that will do, but I feel that these should be reviewed by Adam before we, we may very well have to pay the $10,000, and that's fine. But I think we need to go per Counsel's advice and at least let him review them and then advise us how to move forward.
All right, per the note on this, I did ship it to Adam at like 5 till 12, and I did put these both in SharePoint. So then let's hold off on a motion. I will add this. Let me write myself a note because I'm going to have to revise the agenda. FY21, the NFP discussion on our 24th meeting, or 25th rather, Friday is the 25th.
25th.
I'll add that to that, and hopefully we'll have a response from Council.
So this is just for the 2020 invoice?
Right. There is also a 2021 renewal letter of engagement that it looks like Mr. Kreidler obtained around May 4. It has not been signed. There is no signature. So I agree, Joe, that we consult with Council on how to move forward with this.
Because I was under the impression from Mr. Lombardi that he, Mr. Kreidler, did sign a contract, and we do have a contract moving forward. But as you see, the contract that I had them send, there's no signature on either one of these. So I think we need...
There is a signature on the, on the April 29, 2020.
Oh, yes, but I'm talking the May 4.
But not on the 2021, on May, and I only got one. Should there have been two?
No, it should be, you should have, Madam Chair, you should have the May 4, 2021, and you should have the April 29, 2020. Is that correct?
Okay, those are the two that I have.
And so the May 4, 2021 is for extending the contract for one more year, starting July 1 of this year. So that's what I'm questioning.
This one would have had to have come before the Board of Selectmen for approval, I believe, before Jim could have signed it. So, in any of, I believe. So that one would still be, we would have to have a discussion on whether we want to continue with that or not. So.
Well, I believe that we should get a, get a, an opinion from Town Council for the 2020, and that will lead into the discussion for the 2021.
All right, so I will add this. I will revise the 25th agenda to add this to that. And we will be waiting for an opinion from Council.
Do you want me to reach out to Mr. Lombardi again, where he stated that he has a signed contract? I will reach out to him and say the ones that they sent to us is not signed? Is there something we're missing?
I would wait until we hear from Town Council before we contact him again. That's my, my opinion.
I agree with that. So let's, let's see what Council comes back with.
Awesome.
All right. Moving on to the next one, discussion of the senior write-off program. So.
Madam Chair, were you gonna, were you gonna address rats under financing?
Yes, I was.
We're still there.
Are we still in financing? Okay.
We are still in financing because this is a discussion of senior write-offs. And I think, I'm looking at, let me look at the agenda that's posted. Didn't we have the fire department transfers? Yes, it is posted. And there are other municipal transfers that we need to look at that have been coming in. So we'll get to municipal transfers. Let's go to the senior write-offs discussion.
Okay.
So, Chaz, this one was put on at your request, and I know we had talked about this maybe at a meeting a while ago. I'm not sure. But anyway, you requested that this be, can we have this item placed on an upcoming agenda? You've had requests for this to be discussed. So I'm going to hand off to you to start the discussion on senior write-offs.
Well, I have been, it has been requested by a couple of departments, if we could reengage the senior write-off program. These are departments that do utilize senior citizens, and I really don't like that term because I'm slowly approaching that title myself. The, I know that the transfer department or the transfer station has, usually has volunteers that help them out with that. And I'm not sure if the Council on Aging also has that involved. So I know that that was ended at some point, but I'd like to know, can we reengage that so that the additional help that some of these departments utilize can do that?
So Joe, do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I'm not quite following. This is the first I heard about it. So I'm just, I'll keep listening.
I don't know the exact terms of it. I think that if you're a senior in town and you volunteer in a department that needs volunteers for, whether it's for filing or, you know, whatever, that you can get a certain amount of dollars taken off your property taxes. So I, and I think it was in place probably until COVID. I don't know at what point it was stopped. I know that it hasn't been stopped since I've been on the board, and I've been on the board a year now.
Right.
But it was not, it had been in place prior to that, but I honestly don't know the recent history.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry.
I'm, let me guess, that's Andrea. Where are you?
Up here in the corner.
It's like this voice comes from above.
Maybe you should listen to that.
You're on FinCom, so you might have information about this?
I thought that that program ran through the assessors.
Yes. Okay, so I, so with that being the case, I think I'd want to talk to the Assessor's Office to see, together with probably the Treasurer's Office, to see if this is something that is sustainable for the town right now. I'm certainly not opposed to it, being a senior citizen myself. No, I wouldn't be opposed to this whether or not I was. But I think I'd want some more history about when it stopped, if it stopped. And I also don't know how one applies for it or finds a volunteer position to participate. So.
I agree, Madam Chair. I think we should figure it out. Any, anybody that's volunteering, that's a senior, we should try to help them out. It may be a little bit, but something's better than nothing. But let's follow up with the assessors and see exactly what we need to do.
I think, in my mind, I think I remembered that it was, we might have gotten $100 off your property tax for the year, or it wasn't a huge amount by any means, but it was something. And it recognizes the volunteer work. But then you get into things like, well, I know when we talked about this. It had to do with, can volunteers, board member volunteers have a write-off on taxes? I might, someone had asked me about this early on in my time. I'd have to go back through agendas, early on on my time on the Board of Selectmen. And that's where we discussed it. You know, so, so then it begs the question of if you're a senior in town and you volunteer for an appointed board position, not necessarily an elected position, but a, an appointed board position, is it possible to take a write-off? Who does it apply to? Within, you know, categories, first of all, you have to be a senior, but then, how does it work?
So Madam Chair, do you want to assign somebody to look into this further, or how do you want to proceed with it?
I think that would be great. I, right now.
Since I opened my mouth, I guess I'll make a couple of phone calls and I will get back to the board.
That would be perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, Chaz. I appreciate it. Okay. So, so Chaz will look into this. Do we need to vote you to do that, or can we just do it by consensus?
Well, I'm not doing anything financial right now, so I'm just checking into it.
All right. Chaz could check in. No more. All right, that works. All right, moving on. The next thing on the agenda is the fire department transfer of appropriations. And since that time, there were more appropriations requests. This is MRT time. And I know I had, we approved the Board of Health request at our last meeting. And I had, you know, I had signed it, and I noticed that it also has to be signed by the FinCom. So I scanned it and sent it to Andrea and Lynn. And I assume that is the path for this, so that it can be approved by the FinCom. And I know because I have an email that Andrea sent me earlier, which I will discuss here in a minute, that the FinCom is meeting on Thursday night to approve the municipal relief transfers that we're getting, these MRT requests. So, unless, and Andrea, this is to you, because frankly, I might have not even sent it. I might have just put it in the draft and not hit send, which I have been known to do recently. Did, should those requests come to you scanned? Would you rather have them in the FinCom box? How would you like to get the MRTs that we approve?
Well, the only question I have is the validity of an original signature. If you scan it to us, it's not original signature.
That is true.
And I don't know if that matters or not. In the recent past, because of COVID and stuff, we got it in the email, by email, and then we signed it. It doesn't matter who reviews it first. It can be the FinCom or the Selectmen.
Oh, good. So if more MRTs come in, they could go to you, since we're not meeting until Friday.
Right.
And then you could get them to us. That's good to know.
Yeah. And, oh, the thought just flew out of my mind of what I was gonna say.
Original signatures, original signatures. So I did put the, what did I do with the original? I might have put it in your box. I slid it in your box, but I scanned it and I, your box here at Town Hall. But I scanned it to get it to you so that you would know. And we have a whole stack, whole stack, maybe five here as well, to talk about in today's meeting.
Because I've received no more, just the one from Carla and the one from the Fire Chief.
Okay, so you did get the Fire Chief one as well?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, because that's the one we're going to address here today. So I could, if we approve, I will sign off here. I have to look at how they're written.
And in recent times, since we weren't able to, you know, have public meetings, sometimes the FinCom would sign one transfer request sheet, and the Selectmen, another transfer request sheet. Then they would be stapled together as if they were one, and apparently, we did that all last year. So apparently, that was acceptable.
Okay, so maybe we should just continue that. I'm looking at the bottom of the form. It says, original to town accountant, copy to finance committee and Board of, of Selectmen. So what I, and then the Department Board of Commission. So what I did then is I scanned you a copy. Must have given the original to the town accountant. I'll have to check on that. And then I kept a copy for the Selectmen.
Well, since you scanned it to us, we can sign your sheet, and it will be all in one instead of having to be in two, which is better for filing purposes and things. It's, in the past, the, the Selectmen met, certainly not on such an often schedule, and they usually addressed it far later than the FinCom did. So now it's, it's working the other way, and that's just fine. If you could just email it to me, or Lynn, it doesn't matter, but I, as a clerk, usually get those things and then send them off to everybody to review.
Okay. Yeah, I sent the other one to both of you because I wasn't exactly sure who to send it to.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, okay, all right, then I'll do the same thing then that I did with the other, with these. All right, so looking at the municipal transfer requests that we have here, from the fire department, this is dated June 15, and it... And it, it is requesting an amount of $21,000 to be transferred with, into the operational staff budget. And it'll be transferred from $11,000 from professional and technical services training, and $10,000 from replacement equipment. So my only question on that is, and Andrea, since you're still on, maybe you can answer this too. I know there was a request from, to the FinCom for funds from that reserve that the FinCom holds for repair of equipment.
It was $32,000.
$32,000.
$32,000 and something. It left us with a little more than $6,000 in the reserve fund.
Reserve fund, okay. So I guess my question is, is, I'm looking at replacement equipment, and I'm wondering why the funds didn't come out of replacement equipment. Maybe this, I don't know. I really don't know. You, I haven't looked at this as much as the FinCom has, you know, historically, so. But in any event, the request is for $11,000 from professional and technical services, $10,000 from replacement equipment, and it is to fund salaries, from what I can tell, operational staff. So I guess, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a municipal transfer request for $21,000, transferred to the operational staff account, from $11,000 from the professional technical services, and $10,000 from the replacement equipment for, from the Fire Department.
Go see somebody out back.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, so I'll get that signed and to the FinCom. All right, so moving on to the next one here. Go back. These came from the Treasurer's Department. The first one was for equipment rental. It's $81.15 to be transferred from dues and memberships into equipment rental. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move from the Treasurer's Department to transfer $81.15 from the dues and memberships account to the equipment account.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. It is unanimous. All right, next one. The next one is also from the Treasurer's Office. The amount requested is $7,500, and it's for a Medicare overage, so Medicare Town Share. So the request is for $7,500 from professional and technical services to be transferred to Medicare Town Share, and I did not read the account number. So the remaining balance in the appropriation from which it was transferred is $16,344. So professional and technical services would still have that 16K plus in it. So is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we move from the Treasurer's Office $7,500 from, for a Medicare overage from the professional technical services account to the Medicare Town Share account.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, because I saw that.
I read that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, and I believe there's one more. Transfer of Appropriations, again, this is from the Treasurer Collector, an amount of $5,204.23 to be moved, transferred from professional and technical services, to be transferred to unemployment compensation, because we have had more unemployment due to COVID-19 and the added unemployment benefits compensation. Is there a motion?
I move that we move $5,204.23 of the Treasurer's Office, moved from professional and technical services into the unemployment compensation account.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. So I believe those are the municipal relief transfers that we have.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We, you will send those additional three to the FinCom as well?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let me, let me check the date on those. I've been trying to get them, the date on that was 6/22, which was yesterday. So I, I've just been trying to get them done as they come in, so that we're timely on this. I did get, and I think I'm going to put it in right now, this is the rats in Town Hall. With the, there, there seems to be an increase in rats around Town Hall. And Rob brought this to me this morning. I know that you guys haven't seen it yet. I can put this on Friday's agenda, if that is better for you, but I don't see a request to encumber funds here. He has contacted Monmouth City Regional Pest Control. He'd like to treat the building once yearly with rat bait, yearly foundation spray, excluding termites, and eaves of the exterior building sprayed with these and other flying insects. That's $14.50. And then, I'm looking, maybe these are two different, oh no, one is for 272 Main Street. Here's a different one for 16 Dudley Road, so this must be for the senior center?
Yes, I got a question, Madam Chair. So I'm a little confused, because I know Monmouth City used to do it for years and years and years, but then, I think a year ago or two, amongst the turmoil, that contract was taken away from Monmouth City. So are we going to go back to using them as, because I never heard of any issues while they were taking care of that building, but now there's a new company, I believe, taking care of it? And I, for me, I think we should keep it within town. If they used to do that work and it was good, I think we need to make sure that they have that contract and do it on an annual basis, or however often, because once you get a rat problem, the rat's only going to get bigger.
Okay, so I guess, Chaz, thoughts?
I think we should move this to our next agenda and gather the information that Joe just talked to us about.
Okay, I will agree with that, because I have, I don't know the, I don't know the answers to these. So let's get those answers then and move this to the Friday agenda.
Okay.
So how do you want to get the answers, Madam Chair? Should we reach out to the maintenance and then ask him, who's doing it, or how are we going to do this?
Well, let's look. Who's the liaison to facilities? Do we have a liaison to facilities?
That would be me.
Chaz.
That would be Chaz. Do you have too much on your plate? Do you want to send this one Joe's way?
I think if Joe would be amenable to that.
Yeah, so what I will do is I will talk to Rob. I'll find out what is actually going on, where's the contract, and then also, I'll find out why Monmouth City is no longer doing it, or maybe they are back. But I'll get them answers and I'll, I don't know if I can get them for, for Friday's meeting, but we can definitely check for Monday.
Okay, good. Thank you, Joe, for doing that.
So do you want me to put this on Monday?
Yeah, put it on Monday, yes.
Okay, so it's on Monday. I'll do that, and I will, in the meantime, scan these two estimates that he handed me this morning, and I'll put them in the SharePoint under that, yeah?
Well, Madam Chair, I would think if we have a rat problem, and we've already got a quote on that, let's, let's get that taken care of before it gets worse, and then Monday, we can discuss who's actually doing that, who's maintaining that.
I think that if we already have a company doing this, we wouldn't want to start a new thing.
That's what I'm concerned about. If we have a contract with another organization, we need to check that first before we enter into an agreement with somebody else.
He was doing this and requesting an encumbrance of funds, but I don't know exactly how this will work, if it's work being done in FY '22. So there are questions around this.
All right, I'll find out who's servicing us first, what the contract is, and we'll find out where Monmouth City stands.
And we'll put this on the Monday agenda.
Perfect.
And go from there.
That's all right.
Oh, okay. All right, it is on Monday agenda. All right, that sounds good to me. Where are we in finances? Did I go?
5.1.3.
Okay, so we're moving on to the Greenville Road project update. I received, I'm the one that put this on there, and I know that there's more that others might have on this, but I receive, I put this on the agenda, because we talked about it last time, and also because I got a letter. So let me get to that. And I'm assuming you guys saw the letter that I put in the SharePoint.
Yes, yes, from Jim.
It wasn't from Jim, it was from, this is the Blue Book, Kirk Miller. And I'm not exactly sure what the Blue Book, well, I do know what the Blue Book is, so I'm not sure if this is just like an oversight thing, but it's regarding the Greenville Road Bridge Replacement. Good day, I am requesting the awarded contractor, the award amount, and the anticipated start date for the above referenced project. If you could please email the requested information, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much. So there really isn't anything that I, so I did not respond. I put it on the agenda and for this meeting. This came in last week. So it's Wednesday, 6/16, and I believe we had this on our agenda earlier that day. So.
To answer your question, that is an oversight thing?
That's what I thought.
They know that we had sent out for bid, and they're just checking to make sure what, if we awarded it or not. Because you have it on the agenda, does that mean that we can discuss the current bids or what Mr. Smith talked about on Tuesday?
I believe we talked in open session, didn't we, at the Tuesday meeting?
Yes.
So this came in after that open session, and I don't know that there have been any bids rewarded yet, because I know the low bid withdrew.
Correct. We have not, we have not agreed upon anything, but I do have some information that I can share, since we have it on the agenda. Mr. Smith did say, I did get an email back from him, and he did check with his resources within the state, saying that our Chapter 90 funds are not going to be increased, or it's not suspected that they're going to be increased or decreased. They're going to remain about the figures that he was talking about on Tuesday. I also have had conversations with Senator Cronin in regards to that same issue, and he agrees that the, the Chapter 90 funds are not going to be, be changed. Having said that, I feel that we should be taking some action on this, only because the more we take our time to come to a decision on this, I think the more costly the, more costly the project's going to be in regard to the, the actual supplies, because of this current situation, they want to get started, as I think he said, in September. So I'd like to come to a decision on this sooner rather than later.
I think that we need to at least involve the financial team, to see how this will be funded. Will it be funded through a loan? How, how will this work? Because I know that we need over 500K, I believe.
Yes.
I would like to have it done sooner rather than later, because of the grant that's involved. I always think we should take advantage of all grant monies that are available to us. So perhaps we should put this on an agenda for discussion. Maybe, I have not yet posted the agenda for the 29th, but I will be. So do we need further discussion of this and invite our treasurer and accountant, et cetera, to attend?
Well, I'd like to be able to have the discussion, or someone have a discussion with the financial team and bring it to, I'd like to have a decision by that date, because we have a $500,000 grant award, and we also have an engineering grant award that's on the same project. And I don't want to put either of those in jeopardy.
We do have some time. I thought the one was extended until, I guess, the project completion would have to be 2022.
Yeah, September of 2022.
Right, they want to start work in this September, but.
Okay.
It's the cost of, of the.
All right.
Construction costs are going up, and I just want to make sure that we.
I think we should lock something in. We need to, we need to lock something in, because every day, the cost of everything's going up. So if we can get something locked in and signed, and if they take an extra month to get started, that's fine, but I think if we take an extra month, we could add another 40, 50, $100,000. So we, we need to be very proactive of how we move forward on this bridge.
Okay, so I'm going to put this on the June 29th agenda. And I'll see, do you want me to find out from?
Yes, in my conversations with the, the individuals that I've been talking to with the state, this may be part of the infrastructure conversation we may have with our COVID funding as well. The additional ARA or whatever.
ARPA, yeah.
Yeah, ARPA. That was, and I'll just add that I am having, I am having a meeting next Thursday with both Representative Harrington and Senator Cronin on the issues that we talked about last Tuesday. And there, we're going to come up with an action plan, or they're going to help me come up with an action plan to present to the board.
All right, that sounds good.
Awesome.
All right, meanwhile, today I need to get the NEU number, so that we can, so that Jared can apply for the town for the ARPA funds. So that needs to be done by June 3rd.
Correct.
So that's critical. All right.
And you did get the email that I added to SharePoint from, or no, I put in the Selectmen's box.
I got it, I didn't put it in SharePoint, it wasn't anything.
Yeah, it was just, it was from Senator Cronin saying, you know, you need to move on this.
I think it was the.
Yeah.
And it attached the letter that we had already received from Brian Sweeney that was in Monday.
Yep, yep.
Fridays, one day, one of our meetings, so.
But he's, he's looking out for us.
That's a good thing. All right, so that's the Greenville Road project. I put that on the June 29th agenda. Moving on. Moving on, 5.1.4, responses to Conservation Commission requests coming to the selectmen. All right, as you guys know, we've been receiving, because the Chair of Conservation Commission sent her email to say, if you have conservation work done, you need to contact the selectmen. All right, because of that, we have been receiving emails from applicants and potential applicants for conservation work done. We also have the June 8th letter where the Chair of the Conservation Commission declared that since there was no staff in the Conservation Office, no conservation work would be done in Townsend. And we have dealt with that. We are waiting for, the, the letter has been attempted to be delivered, but it has not yet been picked up by the recipient. So we have that. So that puts the Chair in limbo, but there is a Vice Chair who has not called a meeting in the response, in the interim. So what I have done where I could is respond to people. So going through this, I have one applicant that's looking to replace a septic system. And I just said, so I emailed him and said, has anyone from Conservation dealt with this form? And he responded, not that I know of. I tried to send it to Conservation and was instructed to send it to the selectmen. So there's that one. There was another one that came in that, so let me cancel out of here, from, inquiry asking if they could get an opinion on whether or not, hold on a minute. I don't want to lose my files. An opinion on whether or not they should purchase a piece of property that is in endangered species habitat. So I just responded to that by providing them. I said, the Conservation Commission is not meeting right now for their Chair. We hope meetings will begin again soon. In the meantime, we may want to consider talking to, you may want to consider talking to NHESP since part of this property is priority habitat. And I included the link to NHESP. So I did respond to the two of them. I also received email and have been receiving email from Dana Roberts regarding the conservation easement, the history on this. And Chaz, you would be aware of this too because you were on the planning board. There was a decision from around 2018, 2019 that allowed the OSPD up on North End Road. And part of that was a piece of property that the applicants wanted to preserve, that they will hold in fee, that the planning board required a conservation restriction be placed. That restriction was begun in 2019 and apparently nothing was done further. The applicant came back to the planning board for amendments. So there were three amendments to the decision at the applicant's request. The conservation restriction was a requirement for building permits. And I believe that a letter went out from the Building Commissioner without the Building Commissioner having thoroughly reviewed, I shouldn't say that. There were so many pieces that it was, it could have been confusing to determine what the pieces were. In any event, the conservation restriction needed to be completed. I don't know the history of when it went to the Conservation Commission, but I got the conservation restriction through Jim Kreidler in a phone call after the, after the agent resigned in January, saying, hey, can you put this on the agenda for signatures? And I said, sure, give me the approved for local signatures notice from EOEEA. That notice was not forthcoming. I said, once I received that notice, we could put it on the agenda. So I guess I was the Chair at that point. So maybe it was February when he came to me. I heard nothing else about it until late March, April, where he sent me an email from Mr. Roberts, he being Kreidler, sent me an email from Mr. Roberts saying, where does this stand? And Jim sent me an email saying thoughts on this and we discussed it in our weekly agenda meetings. I had said, if someone from Conservation will work with me or if there was staff, that I would be happy to get it moved along. So the, we, the Board of Selectmen had approved the hiring of a Conservation Administrative Assistant. Once she was on board, I sat with her to go through the conservation restriction because I am, as the Townsend Conservation Land Trust person, familiar with other conservation restrictions here in town. So I understand the process and I know what I'm looking for when I read a CR. There is a whole, and it's available online, anybody can see it, including our Conservation Commission, on the EOEEA website to see what the process is, what the timeline is and when the local signatures can be added. Apparently, the Conservation Commission on or about December 2nd, without reviewing, as far as I can tell, the actual content of the CR, signed off on it, which is why there is apparently a misunderstanding of how this happens. The signatures were put on a page, but the CR was not reviewed. And EOEAA will do nothing with it until they give the approval for the signatures. So where we stand now is the Administrative Assistant and I sat down and at the end of April and the beginning of May, there were two times after she came on board where I sat with her, we worked on my computer because as we all know, in trying to get the interim set up for treasurer, for accounting, it takes a while for Guardian to get things in place. So we worked on my computer. I emailed it to her. Second time we worked, we worked on her computer and she sent it to Town Council. At that point, I stepped out and I did not get the CR that we worked on sent back to me. The Administrative Assistant resigned. However, she is still the Conservation Commissioner. So I have an email from her that I just want to share. And I believe I put it in the SharePoint. So if I could get out of this, I can read it. So she said, hi, if it's not too late and if at all possible, I'm requesting a slight addition to the agenda for tomorrow's BOs meeting, which is now today's. It would be to receive update on the status of the Conservation Commission at this time. At today's meeting, I was concerned when selectmen shank, so that was Monday's meeting, I guess, indicated the Commissioner had gone to meet with an applicant. This is mainly because I was not contacted in any way, when I've indicated several times that I'm still eager to carry out the duties and responsibilities. If this is possible, I promise to be brief and to the point, no drama. Best, Jen. So I guess what we need to figure out as selectmen with a non-functioning, but we do have, I know at least two members of the Conservation Commission who are willing to function, how we go on with conservation work in town. Because just like us, the Board of Selectmen, I can't function without checking things out with you. The Conservation Commission, or are still willing to work as Conservation Commissioners, cannot do anything without the blessing of their board. So. Thoughts from the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, I've, I've got some thoughts here. And I've got some concerns, okay? I guess first and foremost, yesterday I was leaving Town Hall and I did have the opportunity to speak with Mr. Roberts and actually Mr. Hussey. We're both outside and so I got some pointed questions asked at me and I did say I would address them. But also now today, as I was leaving Town Hall, I was stopped by Rick Metcalf from the Board of Health with great concerns as far as what is going to happen with this conservation. The Board of Health is now being impacted by the Conservation not dealing with it. So first and foremost, I made it very clear yesterday to Mr. Hussey that he is the Vice Chair of that Commission. He is appointed to do his job. He just wants to, everyone wants to reiterate it's a bunch of personnel conflicts. Well, to me, I've told them and I'll say it here, that personal conflicts aren't made to be in Town Hall. If we have a personal problem with somebody, we all deal with it, whatever we got to do. But they are truly liable to take and do the duties that they have been appointed for. And Mr. Hussey made it very clear that, you know, they have no intentions of having a Conservation meeting. I don't know what legally we can do as a board, but I do have problems. I know, you know, I haven't reached out to everybody. I reached out to Mr., oh God, from the other one that we're just talking about, Mr. Hussey and Jim DeRoyan. And Mr. DeRoyan has been coming in. He has reached out to, I think, a couple other people on the board, but he's made it very clear that he can't do anything without a meeting. I don't know why our back has to be put against the wall here. You know, Mr. Hussey said that he understands that Ms. Hill's been in doing things. Well, if people are going to go in the office and do things, then call a meeting and get the job done for the community. We need to take and do what's right for the citizens of this town. When you get the Board of Health concerned that things aren't being done, you get individuals, citizens of our community really being held up, I've got a problem with that. I said it when we initially started, if the Conservation doesn't want to do their job, resign. We need to have the board filled and done the proper way. What is going on to try to hold the town hostage? I am not going to fall into that game. This is not a game. This is people's lives and their responsibility. So they need to get their act together.
Chaz.
Any thoughts?
First off, I, I believe that there is town business that needs to be done and commissioners that we have need to engage in some of the businesses that they want to. My understanding as well is there are at least two commissioners that are willing to do some work. My concern is that we are also dealing with, they have to meet. They have to meet to make decisions, you know. I don't know what their quorum is, but I do know that some business can be done outside of the, the meeting, but some of the decisions that need to be made need to have a quorum. Having said that, my next, my next comment would be that we need to talk with Town Council and we need to find out exactly what needs to be done. You know, the, we, backing us against the wall, I don't think is, is going to help. I mean, part of the reason why I decided to run for a selectman is that I want everybody working together, you know? I don't necessarily agree with a lot of things, but I'm willing to compromise on, on, on almost any issue that, that comes. There's been issues on the Board of Selectmen that some of it I don't agree with, but I'm going to be amenable to it because we need to move things on. For, we have been, you know, with our boots stuck in the mud long enough. So what I would like to do is to talk with Town Council and at least if we can get a meeting with Town Council with the remaining or who is on the commission to find out what their grievances are and to see if, if we can move forward, I would like to do that. But, you know, we can't, we can't be, we can't be dragging our feet and waiting. I mean, it's, it's already been too long.
Okay, then I have a suggestion then. I would suggest that we have Town Council here on Tuesday. We are, he has open hours from four to seven. And so far I haven't received any requests for that. I have a request for me for that. And at seven, he is joining us for a, an executive session. I can add an executive session to that, to which we will invite at least the two members of the Board of Selectmen that I know are still interested to be in. Or maybe we can just discuss with him what to do.
Can we expedite a, a request from two of the members of the Conservation Commission to talk with Town Council to find out what they can do right now to expedite? If they're willing to talk with Town Council?
You mean on Tuesday?
Yes.
On Tuesday, yeah. I will put a Town Council request on the two members of the board that I know have been, I'll, I'll reach out to them and see what time they're available between four and seven.
And, and I would like to know legally what we can do just to keep these things moving forward? What we can approve or what, what can happen so that we can continue on, on at least getting some of the business done? Because I agree with the Board of Health. We need to get these things, you know, taken care of in a rapid fashion.
Rick Metcalf came to talk today as well.
Okay, and, you know, also, I mean, it was kind of, to me, it was the hot thing to, you know, have that conversation yesterday with Mr. Roberts. I felt bad for him. You know, he's trying to explain exactly the process he's going through. And I don't know enough about that process and I wasn't involved in that. But where you have a Conservation member sitting right there, that nobody wanted to do anything. It was just kind of like, oh, well, you know, and I just, I, you know, if you got someone trying to do something with their property, if there's got to be some kind of restrictions or whatever, I know I've gone through it in town. I've had to do that. Just do it, move on. I mean, something dragging out for two or three years. And for us, the Board of Selectmen, to be dragged into conservation issues, I'm speaking for myself. I am not going down that rabbit hole with anybody. We need to get them people, however we need to do it. If we need to change the entire board because they don't want to do their job, then I would be in favor of doing it. But there have been some members that have stood up to the plate and trying to do what's right for the community and we need to move forward.
So Madam Chair, I just want to move this along. I think that if we can contact whoever members are willing to talk with Town Council to, to have that conversation with, with him so that we can have some kind of vision moving forward.
I would, I would like to talk to Town Council first to see that he is amenable to this.
Yep.
Or what his suggestions are. So I will do that. And I will also contact the two members that I know have been stepping forward, even though I don't think they've spoken to each other. So that's what I'll do.
If we're going to put it on the agenda.
We have Adam here on Tuesday in person, so.
So if we're going to put it on the agenda for executive session, do all the commissioners have to be notified that we're going to have that meeting? So that at least we've done it legally, so there's no questions who's been notified.
I will check with Adam and see what he.
Please do, please do. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's what I will do. You're welcome. Okay, so moving on. And, oh, by the way, in the SharePoint is the communications between myself and Mr. Roberts. You can see those.
I did read that, yes.
All right. 5.1.5, report on interim. And is that where I am? Hold on one minute.
Yes.
Yes.
Because I have an older version. All right. We do have one inquiry that came in, and I put it in the SharePoint, maybe five minutes before the meeting started. So if you have access to the SharePoint, the question was, and when we wrote this, we put, please put in an application with the, with the Board of Selectmen, but we did not specify what an application should be. So I, I thought a letter of interest and a resume, or, you know, description of qualifications. I need to get back to the person to let them know. So that is the only one that I have seen, unless either of you have received any.
Do we need to make a vote on, on what criteria that is?
I think we should vote on how does one go about applying. The question is, I am interested in the temporary BOS executive assistant position.
Madam Chair.
Posting it mentions to submit an application. So is there a formal application, or should they send an email to?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So this is, I do believe I've recused myself from any conversation in regards to this temporary position.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I, I, I just do not want to be involved in any discussion whatsoever. I am going to step out of this meeting. You guys can figure out, however you want to do it. Send me a text. I'll come back to the meeting. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. So Chaz, your thoughts?
I suggest a letter of, of interest and a resume.
Okay.
And the resume will outline all the information that we're needing.
All right. So is there a motion?
I move that the selectmen choose for criteria for interim Board of Selectmen executive assistant position, a letter of interest, and a current resume as an application.
Okay. And what I will do is, I will, okay, so, and it would come to selectmen@townsonma.gov. I think that was in the posting.
I, I, I think we should have it to come to you and to me, and not to
Oh, right. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I will change that and send an updated posting. Thanks. I didn't think about that at all. All right. Second, all those in favor?
Chaz Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Okay, so I'll take care of that right after the meeting. That's all I have on that. That's only, did you receive anything? I didn't see anything else coming into selectmen. And I think this was sent just to me.
Did not.
So, all right, perfect. So hopefully, we can get someone in ASAP for that. All right, back to the agenda. Let's get, let's get Joe back in here. Can you text him, Chaz?
And if we can be expedient, Madam Chair, I have sessions to go to.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't think we have that much more to cover. The, is Joe back? All right. Well, we have a quorum, so I'm going to continue on. It's the Wall That Heals. And I wanted to, an update on that, and I wanted to roll in 5.1.8 regarding the band concerts. I had talked to Terry about this just today, about encumbering 1300, and she said, no, don't do that. She said it is because, it is, she said, it is better to talk to Betty May, and to use the monies that are appropriated for FY22 for band concerts. And then, when we do have a special town meeting, roll more funds into that to cover whatever comes out for the town band to play. But that will require Betty May's approval.
Okay, so would that cover for what she has set up for this summer? And then there will be additional funds that, because we wouldn't be doing a town meeting until the fall?
That, that is correct. So when she puts in for the fiscal year, that includes the band concerts in July and August, and also anything in next June.
Okay, so as long as that 1300 doesn't step on any things that, that she has already booked, I don't have a problem with that.
That was her concern, was that she wouldn't have enough funds. She budgeted for exactly the number of band concerts there would be.
Okay.
So, so it does require her approval. Let me have Joe back here. So in any event, I don't know if I have the right number. All right, so, anyway. So I would like to make a motion that we have one of us approach Betty May Tenny to inquire about this.
I move that we have one of the Board of Selectmen contact Betty Tenny in regards to the Wall That Heals. I think Joe has been working on, on this project, so I don't think he'd have a problem talking with her.
Okay, then, I would move that the select person who does it is Joe.
So
What are we, what are we talking about?
Okay, hold on, Joe.
So we, go ahead, Chaz.
I move that we ask Joe to approach Betty May Tenny in regards to the Wall That Heals band funding to allow for us to find the funds, to be able to have the band at the Wall That Heals celebration on the July 1st.
Okay, so.
We can, we can talk about it in discussion, Joe.
Okay, so call Betty May and see if she will allow us to find the funding for it, and if they will play. Is that what we're doing?
Well, second my motion first, and then we'll talk about it.
Oh, second. Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Oh, I wasn't here.
I know, I know.
It caught me off guard.
So, so the discussion was that Veronica had talked with the accountant, and for us encumbering, the funds from last year was not advised. What was advised is that if we could, if, if Betty May could use the funds, that is for 2022, the $1,300, when we have our special town meeting in the fall, we can then fund her the, the money back.
And, okay.
We need her approval to be able to do that.
Because she's the keeper of the account.
Right.
Okay, I got it. So we'll, we'll tell her she can pay for it now, and then in the fall town meeting, we will have it on there to give her back her money.
Correct.
Sure. I'll reach out to her.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
No problem.
Terry said that because it's, it's happening in FY22, you can't really, even though it was supposed to happen in FY21, because it is happening in FY22, it has to be FY22 money.
All right, awesome.
So.
Does somebody have Betty May's? Does somebody have her number direct to us? Where do I get her number?
I don't. I just ran into her at the library last weekend, so I was able to have that discussion.
If anybody has that number, they could send me her number. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I can check with the town clerk if.
Yeah, I'll reach out to her, too.
All right, thanks. Moving on, let me see where we are.
5.1.7.
Anything else on the Wall That Heals? Anything else on the Wall That Heals, Joe?
No, I, I had a conversation last night. We had a four-way conversation with the young lady out of Washington DC. Everything is pretty much so finalized. I know the police department, the fire department have been involved in finalizing everything that we as a community needs to do. They're going to be posting in the newspaper, the exact route, the time, everything. We should see that being posted on social media groups. And once we see that, and he said he'll try to get me a copy of it this evening sometime.
Okay.
Okay.
And Joe, I've cleared my schedule, so I am available from, from 1 o'clock on that day.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for him. He hasn't sent me what he's expecting us to say. If it's simple, we'll be there. If it's a little more involved, I'd appreciate if you could make that speech.
Yep, I could do that.
All right, one other thing. I hear that the route has changed. It's coming up 13 over Bayberry Hill, through West Townsend, and straight down 119. And so, hold on, can we get the flags put up at Town Hall? Apparently, Facilities usually does that. And there, I hear there are bunting. Oh, I think I put the, I did hear back from Todd Arsenal. He sent me the minutes of the meeting. And I was also asked by a committee member about bunting in Town Hall that are available to put under the windows. So could we request that Rob?
Madam Chair, I don't, that conversation did come up last night about a different route. And they, the route that whoever heard, they, they had concerns and questions that they have not publicly put that route out. By the sounds of what you just may have mentioned, up Bayberry Hill Road, down through West Townsend, I, I don't know if they're going to put those tractor trailer units up and down that road, but I don't know if that's a true statement. But I think as soon as I do get the route, better. But I, I, I know that was factual last night, that there were postings out on Facebook of the route, and they said that that's inaccurate. So if this is something, if this is something out now, new today, it's something that, you know, as of last night at 6:30, yeah, something loud.
I didn't see it on social media. It was otherwise. So someone said it to me. So, okay, so what about the flags at Town Hall? Do you want me to ask Rob to check into that? And to get them up here? Because those are the things that the flag committee is putting up.
Yep.
Yeah, I would do all of it.
They're putting the ones along the road.
And can the, the, and I'm reading this off the top of my head because I didn't print this out. The flag committee is going to be putting those flags up on Saturday, correct? Is that what I read?
That's what I heard. That's what I heard.
I put it in, I thought I put Todd's minutes in the
Yes, you did.
And I think that it might have been last night that they went through the flags, or maybe it's tomorrow night. I can't, I'm looking for the email. Anyway, it's in there. So please read the minutes from them.
Yep.
Minutes, yeah, minutes, flag, dot, dot, X. It's in there.
Yep, it's in there.
And so they're going up on Saturday, I believe?
Yes.
Flag route 119, Saturday, June 26. So that should be good.
Okay.
I think they purchased 60 flags. I haven't seen a requisition or an expense expenditure report. Speaking of expenditure reports, I'll put this on Friday. We need to consider lifting the spending freeze that was apparently in place. So I, I think before people
We can do that on Friday.
Okay, I'll move that to Friday.
Sorry to interrupt, but.
Yeah, no, it's fine. You have a job. Library employee vacation rollover request. This is from non, non-union employees. And according to the personnel policies and procedures, not anyone that's subject to that, if you don't have a personal services contract, or you're not under the union contract, you are subject to that. You cannot rollover vacation at all. So I don't know, what are your thoughts on that? It is specifically from the library.
Right.
And we do have other non-union employees.
But it specifically states that you can't roll it over, and they're saying because we are allowing some employees, we're not rolling over all?
The request came from four unions out of the five. So a personal services contract, that doesn't apply to, that's handled individually. And I don't know who all the non-union people are in town. Well, I have a pretty good idea now. But in any event, I, I don't know, I feel like this might be something that we want to consider in the personnel policies and procedures, manual.
Well, you know, and for me, I would say that, you know, we've really tried to help all the employees here where there's COVID, and we've allowed the one time, you know, the carryover. I think we may get a black eye if we say everybody else can, except for the people that are non-union or something. So my opinion is, we should accommodate all employees the same way, if they're union, non-union, and, and just, it's, it's been a trying year for everybody. And I think we need to just not, you know, hamper on this very much. I think we need to just move forward and just tell them it's a one-time deal. It's not a, a permanent thing. And we'll discuss it if we have to again next year.
Chaz, I'm waiting to hear from you.
We have extended it to union, and I do believe that we need to extend it to non-union. I agree partially with Joe. More importantly, the is this, I don't think this is going to cost the town any money. Is it going to cost the town any money if we do this?
Yes.
That would be my concern right there.
That is
How does it cost us money? So I apologize for not asking the question. Because the person was paid for that week when they worked. Where if they'd gone on vacation, they would have gotten that same pay. So you will owe them, if you extend their vacation, you will have to pay them for another week's salary. Unless you give them vacation without salary. If you just give them the time, then it wouldn't cost you anymore.
Right. It's, it's
The paid vacation. Okay, I didn't understand that. All right.
Thank you, Andrea.
I, I have on the agenda for Friday, I look at all the pay things. And there, there are a lot of questions, and it becomes incredibly confusing to keep track of who gets what. If we separate, I just feel like at this point, I just want to hold up and keep things status quo. That's my feelings.
Well, it, it looks like now we may be, and I'm just backtracking here a little bit, that, you know, we may be opening up a can of worms that we ain't going to be able to fix. You know, we want to make sure we treat the employees correct. But if this is going to be something that's going to cost us more money, all of the extensions that we gave doesn't really cost us because they're already entitled to it. So the way Andrea explained is, they work, they got paid on their vacation. Now they're looking, they have paid vacation. So really, we're, we're creating a problem. We're adding money to the budget that we don't have.
Do, help me understand what you were saying, Veronica, about Friday, that you wanted to look more at what that is before we come to
I, I just wanted to go over all the dollars with the board. And there are, you know, I, Jared and Anthony, Jared a lot, has been spending a lot of time trying to decide trying to decipher the union contracts, the tentative agreements. And there are a lot of questions. And I just think it's time that the board see, the, I'm consulting with Kate on some of it. We have to figure out how we're gonna go forward. Because although the negotiations were done and the tentative agreements have been signed, what wasn't done was sitting down with the unions and looking at exactly what those dollars were.
Okay. So that would be, that would be then, I would suggest we need to move this into that discussion.
And I think, I think that overall, we need to look, so we have a motion and a second. This is discussion on the motion. It would also include looking at the personnel policies and procedures manual, which we had attempted to begin in May.
Okay, I'm good.
I think at this point, all right, so motion on the floor to roll this discussion into the personnel policies and procedures manual. Discussion and discussion on Friday, correct?
Yes.
I think the motion was just into the discussion on Friday. All right. All right, let's do that. Or, well, no. All those in favor of the motion?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton, Duranian, yes?
All right, thank you. Motion carries. We'll move that to Friday's discussion. All right. I believe that's the meat and potatoes. I have no liaison reports. Anybody else?
No, I don't.
I think we've pretty much covered that, unless you have something, Chaz?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, I don't think, I'm looking to see if I have anything in Communications.
There's, you have COVID cleaning, bathroom cleaning during vacations?
Right. Oh, okay, so, we have been, there has been additional cleaning help hired during the time that, of COVID, using the CVRF funds from the state. Actually, they're federal funds, the first round that came through last year. So the question becomes, we have our regular custodial staff is going on vacation in July. Can we use, is the COVID person still funded? And can that person be paid to do the work of cleaning the bathrooms in town buildings during the time that the regular person that does that is on vacation? Did I capture that?
So, a outside, they're asking for an outside company to cover for an employee, for an employee's vacation?
Okay, so we have, we have facilities, and we have the assistant, who is, I don't know the title, the person who is the, not looking at the book, I can't give the exact title, but it's a person who normally does the custodial work. All right. We also hired an additional cleaner to do the COVID cleaning. I don't know the status of that. I can find out. I imagine that those funds would not be usable in July if the emergency order is not in place.
That's exactly why I'm questioning that.
And so it then would fall to our facilities people to do the cleaning during the time that the other facilities person is on vacation. And that period of time is two to 12. So the ask is to pay the COVID cleaner to do that work. And can that be done with COVID funds? There's also a statement that I said that COVID cleaning continues, that I ordered COVID cleaning to continue. I didn't that, I didn't order it. I asked if it was. So it seems to me that we need to figure out whether or not that continues. So I guess we need to figure out the contract for the person doing COVID cleaning and how it is funded. And I can look into that.
Okay.
And report back on Friday.
Okay, that works.
All right.
My thought is that as of when the state of emergency was lifted, those additional contingencies were lifted as well.
Right, right. I would agree with that. So I have to find out the status because I don't know. So, all right, so that takes care of that. The other communications, one is for tomorrow night's climate change meeting. There was a survey in there that I was gonna respond to. Are you guys good with just letting me do that?
Yes.
All right, good. I will do that. Is, are either of you attending tomorrow night?
I'm not.
Chaz?
I am going to, I have, also have a Housing Authority meeting at the same time, so I'm gonna probably be.
Double Zooming?
Yeah, I'm gonna have my phone on one, and I'll be at the Housing Authority on the other.
That's the beauty of Zoom meetings. All right. The other one is, I received a letter from a resident about the number of NIPS being on the side of the road, that they had picked up about 200 NIPS in the three quarters of a mile on Warren Road. And they said they were in touch with Senator John Cronin's office, and the aide there suggested talking to the select board. He says that some bands, some towns are banning the sale of NIPS. I know this would not cure the problem, but it's a message to our residents and may reduce the waste. So I said, we could put this on an agenda sometime down the road for discussion.
In July or August, yeah.
Well, I was thinking September or October.
Perfect.
At this point. So that's my thought on that. Further down the road, okay.
It's a valid concern, and I have the same concern.
I know I picked up a lot on my road, so, anyway. All right, so is there a motion to sign payroll and the warrant out of session? I neglected to put that on the agenda. I have to keep remembering to put it on the Wednesday agendas. So is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we sign payroll and warrants payable outside of session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton, Duranian, yes?
Veronica Kell, yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, one second. So our next meeting is Friday. It is at noon. Is there any way we could move that to 12:30? I just will be, I'll be close. I may make it at 12, but if I don't, you guys can stop, but it'll probably be 12:20 before I can jump in.
What do you want to do?
Or just if you want to start at 12?
I already posted for noon.
It's already posted, yeah, we can't change it.
All right, so I'm gonna do my best, so if I'm not there right at, don't panic, I will come.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I motion we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning at 1:40, please say aye.
Aye, Joe Shank.
Chaz Sexton, Duranian, aye.
Veronica Kell, aye. All right, thank you, everybody.
See ya, have a good night. Bye.